I think it's, yeah.
Okay, are we good to go?
Yes.
And we're live on YouTube?
We are.
Excellent. Let's call today's special board of trustees meeting to order at 4:00 PM. Trudy, could you please call the roll?
Valkowski.
Present.
Ethic.
Here.
Macteby.
Ismo.
Here.
Sheets.
Here.
Stanger.
Yeah.
Swanson.
Here.
Zibble.
Here. Thank you. If we could all please stand for that pledge. Mr. Zibble, would you please read the mission statement?
Certainly. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality trans public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on the meeting on meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you. Are there any public comments in the room today? Seeing none? At this time, we will go into our meeting agenda. As everyone knows, this is a special meeting, so we are only allowed to discuss the one and only topic that is on the agenda. The reason we're having a special meeting is board member Swanson and Sheets had reached out to me to request a meeting to discuss why there was a change in the dialer ride scheduling priorities and to go back to the way the dialer ride was scheduled earlier. I believe I stated that correct? So at this time, I think I will turn the meeting over to Ben to give a presentation on why the changes were made and after that we can lead into board discussion. Of course, Ben is available for questions during his presentation. Thank you.
Alrighty, so we're gonna dive kinda deep into how dialer ride works. So if you're confused or have a question, don't, you know, feel like you should wait to ask a question, just, just let me know and ask the question because some of this stuff is transit ease and you know, I'm used to it from 22 years of doing this. So if I say something you don't know what I'm talking about, just, just stop me and ask a question. First off, it's important, we're gonna use some term, I'm gonna use some terms as I talk and it's really important the board understands what those terms mean. So, an essential trip, this is a Lake Tran term. This is a term that we've used for a long time. It's not from the feds, it's not from anywhere else. This is a Lake Tran guideline, procedure, whatever term you want to use. An essential trip is a trip requested for the following purposes. Work, medical, senior center, adult daycare, and ADA. So that is a trip that falls into those categories. That means a customer is taking a trip with one of those purposes. So someone is going to work, going to a doctor's appointment, going to a senior center, going to adult daycare, or they are an ADA customer. Sure.
Are those ranked in order or is that just the way you've listed them?
Yeah, there is no order to them. That's just how they're listed. So they don't, one doesn't sort of trump the others. ADA is required by law, the others are not. But there's no order to them. An unscheduled trip, again, this is uncommon in the transit agent world. This is something Lake Tran does. This is a trip that was requested by a customer and at the time of booking, it doesn't fit on a manifest. But we tell the customer that we will provide the trip and then we somehow provide the trip. We'll talk about the somehow later, but that is essentially, think of that as a trip beyond our capacity. An unscheduled trip is a trip that we do not have the physical ability to do. A denial is a trip where someone calls, they request a trip and for whatever reason, we tell them, I'm sorry, we cannot do that trip. Those three things make sense so far? So, the quote, what I will refer to as the old system of booking is a process that we called, we, the essential trip model. Again, that's a term that we have used. It's not a term that you're gonna hear many places. The way that process worked, and this was up until essentially November 1st of last year. A customer requests a trip, either they call us, they do it through the web, they come in person, somehow they request a trip. Using trapeze, a customer service rep attempts to schedule the trip. So trapeze will real time tell us it fits, it doesn't fit. It gives them a list of solutions that they can pick from, or it says, sorry, don't have space for that. If trapeze identifies a scheduling solution in the past, if it identifies a scheduling solution, everything's great. Customer service rep selects that solution, that trip is booked, it's done. It may get moved later by our schedulers or adjusted, but that trip has been scheduled. The customer is informed it's scheduled and their trip will be provided later. In the essential trip world, if trapeze did not find a solution, so if the customer service rep inputs the information and trapeze says, sorry, we don't have space for that, we still told the customer, you have a trip exactly how you want it. It goes into the unscheduled list of trips, which is a trip that we know at the time of booking, we do not have the ability to provide. If it is not essential, so if the person was calling to go to the grocery store or to get a haircut, the trip is denied, the person is told you don't have a trip. So does that make sense so far? So that's what we were doing. What we switched to do was first come, first served. And I'm gonna call that the new system. The first two steps are essentially the same. A customer calls or they submit something through the web using trapeze, customer service rep attempts to see if there's space for it. But step three is different. In this scenario, if we don't have space for it, the customer is told, I'm sorry, we do not have space to accommodate your trip today. So people that had essential trips in the past that we didn't have capacity for, which we told yes to, were being told no. So that resulted in some increases in denials. So, it's important to understand what one of the biggest differences is between these two systems. The old system, the essential trip system fundamentally promises unlimited capacity to citizens of Lake County wanting to use Lake Tran. If you were going for work, any of those categories, work, medical, senior center, adult daycare, or ADA, we never said no. It didn't matter what resources we had available to provide the service. We always said yes. The trip was considered essential. It didn't matter, the backend was irrelevant. If a customer fitted to those categories, we always said yes. As you can imagine, never saying no can cause some operational challenges. In first come, first serve, we limit capacity. So we say, we can provide this much service in a given day. Once it's full, it's full. I'm sorry, we can't transport you. It doesn't prioritize service in any way. It's all about who gets there first. That is the Federal Transit Administration's preferred method for handling dialer ride service. Their opinion, this does not mean Ben agrees with this. Their opinion is that we can't play God and decide who's more important than someone else. We can't decide what trip is more important to someone else. That doesn't mean it's mandated by law, but that's their preference. So we're not gonna get in trouble by not doing that. But they state repetitively that we shouldn't be the arbiter of what's important to a person. Their example is Mrs. Smith needs to go to the doctor or Mrs. Smith needs to get a hair appointment done. What they will say, what their auditors will say is, well, most times families place a higher priority on medical trips and they might take Mrs. Smith to the doctor. She might have another way to get there, but they might not take someone to a hair appointment. And how are you the transit agency supposed to be the one that decides what's most important to Mrs. Smith? That's their argument. It's not, that's not Ben's opinion. That's what the Federal Transit Administration will tell us in the audit process. In the essential trip system, ADA is required by law when a person qualifies for that trip. ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. What that means is if a person's trip is within a certain set of parameters that are tied to fixed route buses, we are not allowed to tell them no. Because they could get a ride on a fixed route bus, so we provide equal service to them for an ADA trip. So, in the essential trip model, we treat that the same as work, medical, senior center, and adult daycare. ADA just gets lumped in with that. But that one is required by law. Everyone following me so far? So, dialer ride is, is all about balance. All we do here on the operations side of the world is try to keep these two bubbles in check. And in check means equal to one another. Customer demand and our either operational or financial ability to provide the service. Dialer ride, its technical name is demand response. That means we are always responding to the demand that exists and that demand is always doing this. All day, every day, that demand shifts. People do not do the same thing every single day in our system. Their needs change, their trips change. We are always doing this all the time. So, when it looks like this, when customer demand outpaces our operational or financial ability to provide service, we have lower service quality, employees are fatigued, our overtime goes up, it damages our reputation. This was happening in 2011. Not from a financial perspective, in 2000, I'm sorry, did I say 2011? I meant 2022. This was happening. We did not have enough employees to meet the demand. Now, there, there's, there's not a hard line, right? It's not like I have 200 employees and that's sufficient. That, that number is always fluctuating. So we are always watching it because, you know, think of it this way, when people book trips with us, one trip is never equal. You know, a trip from Mentor to Kirtland is a set distance, but you could also have one trip that is from Leroy to Wickliff. And those are counted as one trip, but the amount of hours and resources that it takes to accomplish those are different. Now, it's just as bad to go the other way. Having too many people and too many resources is not desirable either. Yet you do have high service quality because it's very easy to accommodate trips. But you have excess employees, which leads to employee unhappiness. They wanna feel like they are meaningful. You have lower efficiency because you're doing fewer trips per hour and that damages your reputation just like it does if you don't have enough people. So this is the goal. This is what we are always trying to do. High service quality, satisfied employees, minimal overtime, and then you have a good reputation.
Ben, help me with financial ability limitations. I'm not quite sure what you're talking about there.
So, think about 2019. We were essentially over capacity by 50,000 trips. The problem wasn't necessarily that we couldn't hire additional employees, so we couldn't afford to hire additional employees. So there is a time that your financial capacity is the limiting factor versus your operational capacity. And so in 11, in 2022, it wasn't a financial issue, it was that we were struggling to get drivers on board and working. In 2019, it was that we could not afford to provide the service. So that's what I mean by financial. So what happened? So why did we make a change, right? I don't, I don't wanna make a change like this. This is not an enjoyable thing for me to have to tell my employees we're making a change in service. That's, that's, you know, it's not fun. I mean, I gave you a copy of the memo I sent to everybody, you know, it was a two-page memo about how it was not a decision I enjoyed making, you know, and I
Who would you send that to?
Huh?
Who all did you send that to?
All of our employees.
Well, don't you think should have told the board? You talked about the, you can't play God. Sounds like you did. You made a change, didn't tell the board. Board's interested in this kinda stuff because this is the kinda stuff that we hear from the public that they don't like. All of a sudden, there's a change in service. We didn't know about it. The board didn't know about it. It's embarrassing when somebody calls me and asks me, I had a couple of people call me and ask, what the hell's going on basically? And I said, I don't know. So, you know, it, I think it, it's coming down here. You mentioned that you can't play God. Well, I think essential trips are much more important to the people that need essential trips than it is for somebody to go to the, the grocery store and buy a pound of hamburger. So I, I don't see any reason why you'd wanna change the essential trips at all. And our mission statement says it's for emphasis on the disabled and the seniors. Well, essential trips could be either one. But I don't understand why you just made bar. You don't think it was arbitrary, but it appears arbitrary to the people that had to put up with it.
We explain.
Problem.
We have explained it to the customers. I reported this in my CEO report that you got not that long after I made the change and I went over to the November board meeting and no one's asked me any questions since then. I'm very happy to talk about this, you know, but it's not something that's easily communicated in an email.
Well, you should have done it before you made the changes, the point.
I didn't have that opportunity. Service changes too frequently for me to wait weeks to make a change. You know, this is a business decision I have to make. It's not something I enjoy. Don't get me wrong. I don't like to have to make that change. But if I had waited two weeks, I would have lost drivers. People would be walking out the door. And it would get worse. You know, this is like when you run your business, sometimes you have to make a choice in a short amount of time. And it wasn't that I tried to hide it, I reported to the board the same month. You know, my job is to run the place to the best of my ability and provide the best service I can. And I take that very seriously. And this is not something I wanted to do, but it had to be done. And I'll explain a little bit more about that as I go. When you look at on-time performance, this is a very important metric to us. Our ability to pick people up on time is one of the most important things a rider looks at. If you look at this graph and you see below 70%, that's bad. That's, that's a bad service metric. Our goal is above 90. So in end of October and during October, our on-time performance was poor. You can talk to lots of customers. I'm sure Kim and Donna can tell you stories. We had people wait two hours for us. That's not good. Now, October is always a busy month. October is a month where we see a spike in demand every year, at least before the pandemic. And we do our best to prepare for that. We did not have enough people this year. But I can't predict demand. I can't say exactly what demand is gonna be because it changes all the time. So, this is when first come, first served was implemented, right? Do you have a question, Gary?
Yeah, so I what, I, I'm, I'm struggling with trying to figure out what the difference is in the process, the onboarding of a trip process. I guess in the past, you would have said, if, if you get a call for somebody saying, I gotta go to the doctor, they'd go right to the essential service. If you got a call from somebody saying they wanted a haircut, I, I guess I'm still struggling with how, how this changed, not, not from, not from a second guessing standpoint, but from I still don't understand how you, how you determine, how you get essential, if the, if the calls are coming in sort of sequentially, right? How do you determine? And that's the magic of what you guys are doing, I guess. But, but how do you determine capacity if you get an essential service call, an essential service call, and then four haircut rides? At some point, how, how do you know you're gonna have capacity or not have capacity? I guess is what I'm asking. And in other words, I suppose at some point you say to the non-essentials, sorry, we're full for the day. You can't, we won't be able to meet your schedule, right? But how do you know that you're gonna get there at 10 o'clock in the morning, I guess is what I'm asking?
That's what trapeze does for us. So when we, the software is how we manage our loading. So we tell it, we have this much resource and typically measured in time. So we'll take all the drivers' times that are available. It'll be an aggregate amount of time and say, you know, for example, we've got 500 hours of service this day. That goes into the computer with the start and top, stop times of all the employees and you start booking trips against it. So when you open a day, two weeks ahead of time, there's no trips listed. When that day opens, you start to book trips in it. So in day one or two, it could be, any trip gets sent in. It doesn't matter what the category is. The first step is to use trapeze to see if the trip fits in the allocated amount of resources. Does that make sense? And so over time, over the booking times, over that two-week period, those resources get allocated. They get filled up by trip requests. And so as you go along, you have less and less available resource to, to use. So let's say in the second week of booking, because you can book up to two weeks in advance, my resources are full for sake of the conversation. If my resources are full, I will tell a person going to a hair appointment, no, we're full. I'm sorry. In the past, if you fit into the essential list, we told you yes.
But how do you, how, and, and I heard you, that was actually a question I was gonna ask you. You, you would say yes, but you're already full. So how did you handle that? How, how does that get handled?
Sometimes it doesn't get handled very well. It means I either coerce people into working over, I force people to work over, or I provide bad service. And that means I say I need to be there at 2:00 and we actually get you there at 3:00.
Do you, uh, do you ever hold anybody in reserve?
No. But that's part of, well, I'll get to that concept here as we go.
Ben, would you ever bump somebody that was a non-essential rider for an essential rider?
No, once the trip is scheduled, the trip is scheduled.
Okay.
Um, we, we try, it's, it's real time. So when a customer interacts with us, they learn real time, yes, you have a trip. No, I don't have a trip.
Well, Ben, you said something about you didn't have enough time. It looks like you hit 70% that, uh, I can't read from here. So what, what's the date on that?
It's hard to which one are you?
Like it was, looks like it was about a month when you hit 70% where it went up significantly to, well, whatever the
It's like you did it twice, maybe once in August and then maybe once in
Yeah.
Over this.
So
So you did have plenty of time to at least tell somebody what you're thinking about. It's not like, uh, all of a sudden, boom. I mean, there's plenty of time in that graph that, that you could say, boy, we're, we're gonna run into this problem again, maybe. Because you didn't know, because it went back up. And then all of a sudden it nosedived whatever that date is there. It went below 70%. And then you changed it to first come, first served instead of, uh, uh, essential trips first.
One spike i- in a week is not the end of the world, but spikes that stay down and then, you know, are going to continue are a problem. So our intention was to weather the storm in October and not make any changes. We've done it before. But that's not what we saw on the horizon and that's why we made a change. And I'll, I'll get into that a little bit. So this is ridership since 2020. So this is a messy graph. I don't expect you to kinda zero in on this and, and, and gain anything from it. This is all the modes. Blue is fixed route, green is park and ride, red is dialer ride. Here's dialer ride by itself. You'd see a pretty significant spike, uh, that's in October. It's not unusual. Well, again, we'll go further into that a, as I go a little bit. This is, is what's pretty important to look at. These are denials. So, denials typically stay relatively low. You have them down at around 200 going back to the beginning of 2022. You see them moving along. You see September, there's an uptick pretty significantly in the beginning of September and then they go down a little and they stay up. And then they take a dramatic upturn. Now, this is when I implemented first come, first served. So you can see the stress that is building on the system right before that happens. So, yeah, there was a spike in on-time performance decline previously, but I didn't see the same spike in denials. So we didn't make a change because I didn't wanna make a change. But then this started happening. We were at 800 denials before I implemented first come, first served. And those mean, that means that those are non-essential trips. It's a lot of trips that are being denied and a lot of stress being put onto the system. So you can never look at just the one metric, right? There's always more to it. Dialer ride is a, a lot of variables. There is a ton of variability in what we do and you always look at all the kinda factors as you go. So this is a major issue. Now, you can see denials continue to spike after we made the change as customers began to understand the system. In that number, there are, in that 1,200 number particularly, there are some duplicates of people trying to find different trips. You know, they couldn't get the first trip, so try to get a second trip. So that isn't to say that every denial is for a unique trip. But that's a significant spike. People start to learn. We also have, at the same time, employees starting to come out of training and be on the road. At the same time, you have December where trips usually drop off. But, in November, if you add those denials to what ridership looked like, this is what that curve would look like. So if we had provided all the denials, this is what your ridership graph would look like, which is above 2019. You can see the major difference, and I don't have a pointer really, is, is the November number. November is very far away from denials from actual trips provided. Because we just didn't have the ability to provide the service we wanted to. And it's all about bodies. So I wanna try and point out some trends that exist in the graph we have. I've started at 2020 because 2020 is sort of the resetting of service in a way. So when I look at Q1 of 20, 21, and 22, if I look at 21, so when I was evaluating what to do in October of how it would affect Q1 of 22, 21 shows you a pretty flat line. Right? There's not a spike there. There's a big spike in 20. So it's sort of a, what do I do, right? I can't predict the future. What's my right thing to do? I see another big spike in 22. Leading up to October, I'm concerned that ridership is gonna stay up. What's important in here is to, oops, sorry. Oh, that's my right graph. So now we're gonna look at Q4. I see a moderate decline in 21. I see a bigger decline in 20. When I made the decision for, for essential trips in 21, I wasn't sure, or in 22, I'm sorry, lots of numbers. Wasn't sure what was gonna happen. We saw a continued spike in denials, continued low on-time performance. So I'm concerned that this is gonna be more than just October. This is more than just an up and down situation. This is a, you know, we are seeing sustained movement. We can handle, you know, a problem for a couple of weeks. Couple of months starts to get real bad. Something to be aware of. So I look at where the decline in trips in this timeframe started. Here we start at 14,000. Here we start at 17,000. Here we're at 21,000. So you see over these times over the pandemic, overall, trip volume is going up pretty significantly. So, we have not, and we all talked about this when we talked about driver wages in May, we were behind hiring drivers. The change we made in May gets drivers on the road in the end of the year. The drivers we, we got, we started the class or we started the hiring process in May after the board approved the change in starting wages. Really, it was the beginning of June. Takes a long time to get those people on the road. So I was hoping, you know, that we'd be safe for October, that we'd have enough people. But I don't know what demand is gonna be. I don't know how many people are gonna fit through training. I don't know how many drivers are gonna leave in that time. There's a lot of variables.
And
Sure.
Unfair question because unless you've got a photographic memory, but in relative terms, what was our driver employment at the start of this graph versus, uh, when we hit the problem?
The start back in, the start of the graph in 20?
Yeah, and I look at, we're coming in from a high point. You know, on the left, on the left end of the graph.
Yes.
Right? So what would our employment have been there versus where we were quarter 422? Any idea?
You know, I, I, I would have to give you an estimate and I, I believe we were probably around 85% of our driver force when that started. That was the target we were doing at the time of the budget, was trying to be at 85% of our staffing level. So we would have had 170 drivers on staff at the time-ish.
And where, where, where were we in fourth quarter?
Of which year?
What's the difference, what I'm asking is the delta between
The delta between the beginning of this curve and
Sure. So it's important to think about it in, in, in another way also, which is in 20, I had a fully trained driver staff that had a lot of seniority and, and skill. In 22, I was roughly 50 drivers down and about 40% of them had less than a year of seniority. So there were less of them and they were less effective. So, I'm sitting here, what do I do? Right? This is not Right? This is not a great place to be in. I'm not, I'm not thrilled that this is where our service statistics are. Again, I'm sure Kim and Donna can tell you some stories about how late they were a couple of times. We were hearing a lot of customer complaints. I had drivers walking in my office in October on a daily basis, self-telling me, I, you know, I can't do this anymore. I'm quitting. And we had a couple of people quit. A lot of them I talked into staying, but it was, it was getting bad. And every driver that I lose exacerbates the problem. So. Ooh, I didn't delete my second hybrid booking system out of there as I was editing this, sorry. So, so what do we do, right? We're in a situation right now where we are still catching up. We still are in the recovery mode of having enough drivers to do the work we need. And the reason is because there is always, at least in this graph, and this is true before the pandemic, there is always an uptick of trips in the first quarter of the year. We, we should expect, and that's a trend that didn't go away. If you look at this graph, the first quarter, you see a significant increase in trips. So there is a lull between October and March traditionally. So when we, we hit that low spot, we're in a very aggressive hiring mode. We've hired seventy-five drivers in the last seven months. And, you know, my training department is stressed beyond belief, trying to keep these people getting pushed through. They're doing a good job and we are catching up. But we will, assuming these trends continue, and again, I have a crystal ball. These trends will continue, to the best of my knowledge, and going back to essential trips right now is not a good idea, because we do not have the capacity yet to handle a demand spike like this. Now, we talk about ours, is the change we made good or bad? Well, I can say it from a customer perspective, it's good. This is our complaints. We don't get a ton of complaints overall. If you look at complaints in October, that's more than we had for a whole year. That's a, that's a lot. Yes, it's not a lot in a total number. We made the change in November, and even with that denial spike, complaints plummeted. Right? The customers, if you give them a choice between knowing ahead of time, can I take my trip? Will I get to my doctor on time versus us saying, yeah, we'll get you there, and then you show up two hours late? They prefer to know in advance. And I think most of us would agree. If I have to make plans, I would rather know I'm gonna get there on time than not know I'm gonna be two hours late. So the customers want, wanted this. You know, we have continued to see complaints stay lower. I mean, I don't have all the numbers for January yet, but complaints were highest in October. Going back to my bubbles, this is what, this is what we're facing. You know, people in the community were upset. I, I, I agree with you, Lane. I'm sure there were some people that were upset. There are still some people that aren't super happy that we aren't meeting their needs. But it's a short-term problem, right? It's not something that's gonna continue, because this is our hiring. And I, you can't see my dates on there. That's frustrating. Um, the, the, the ones, uh, the four to the, or the four to the far right are, uh, May, August, October, and January. So we made the change on the starting wage, and we have been attracting people, which is great. But it takes us several months to get people through training, finish all their certifications, and get to the point where they're on the road. And their first three months on the road, they are not very productive. It takes time. I mean, I'm sure you all experienced this in your businesses. For a person to be efficient and effective, it takes them time to get there. Sorry, Kim.
No, you're fine. Um, maybe this is slightly off, off the where you're going, but just for example, in the January one, it says that you had seventy-one applicants with only thirty-one offers.
Right.
Why such a disparity?
So that's based on the quality of the applicants.
Okay.
So, um, we only make offers to people we think are a good fit here. Um, we really focus on customer service and, and a desire to help people versus, um, you know, like, we don't hire a lot of RTA bus drivers, because they come in with a mentality that doesn't match with us. And so, um, we only offer to people we think are good employees. So in this case, we had a bunch of people that we didn't like.
So you would rather have less of, from a numbers perspective, you would rather have less of a higher quality than just bodies driving the vehicles?
Yeah, we have to be careful. We also have to be cognizant of how many people we can put in a training class.
Okay.
Because we only have, the, the training process is they're in a training class with our actual trainers who spend four weeks with them in a classroom setting. Then they spend time teaching them how to drive a dialer ride bus, and then they're on the road with another dialer ride driver. And there's a finite number of dialer ride drivers that are willing to train other drivers. They do get a pay supplement to do that, but they've been burning out because of how many people we've been hiring. So we, we try to cap the class at around twenty, because that's how many training drivers we have. So we also only make a certain number of offers to try and hit that target. And we always lose some, which is why we make thirty-one offers, and it results in twenty-one employ- or twenty employees. Between, you know, eighteen and twenty-two is the target. So that's why you see those numbers that way.
Thank you.
Um, so, I mean, we've been working very hard to get people in the door working here. You know, we have, we have two hundred drivers as a total org chart available number of people. Seventy-five of those have been hired in seven months. You know, that's, that's not a small amount of work. That is, and that's not us not trying to get the situation the best possible way it can be. But there's just a limit on our ability to move those things through, and we have worked our butts off. But it's still not time. Going back to the old system now will result in lower service quality. Because we don't have the capacity to meet that demand spike that I think we can all surmise is gonna come between January and March. I don't know that for a fact, that that spike will come, but history tells me that there's a good shot. Question? Okay. So right now isn't the time to make a change. Does that mean that we should never make a change and, and go back to some form of essential trip? No, we probably should. However, I think we should do it in a way that does not provide unlimited capacity forever. That will result on us back in the ballot for more money at some point, because we won't have enough money to hire enough drivers to transport every senior in Lake County. That, that will happen someday. That's what happened in nineteen. So what I am, have been mulling over and talking with my team about is a hybrid system, which does both. It has some first come, serve element, but we allow a certain number of people to go into what we call the essential list, which essentially puts us a little overcapacity. It doesn't, you know, sell the farm, but it does commit to some extra capacity for seniors, people with disabilities going on those trips like they used to. So what I'm gonna call the future system, the hybrid system, we can call it what we want. Steps one and two, like we talked about earlier, are the same. Customer retreat, request a trip via phone or web. Customer service rep attempts to book the trip. Trapeze tells us, hey, you have a scheduling solution. Hey, you don't. If the trip is not essential, it's denied. What we always used to do, what we, we've never stopped doing that. If a trip was not essential since the beginning of time, if we didn't have space for it, it's been denied. So that's not any different. If the trip is essential, we move to scheduling step four, and this is different from the old essential trip system. What it does is it says, we will go above capacity by a certain amount. We won't go above a- and, and do everything everyone wants forever, but we will commit to a certain number of unscheduled trips. Because some unscheduled trips are not bad. We know we're gonna have cancellations. People are gonna no-show. So it's okay to have some excess trips scheduled, but having too many is bad. So this system would still maintain a priority for the essential trip list, but it would not cause us to sell ourselves beyond our ability to do it. You know, for those of you that remember the strategic retreat in, uh, two thousand eighteen, we were fifty thousand trips over capacity in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And that's what precipitated the levy. And so we have to be careful to not put ourselves in that position again. And if we offer unlimited service, as Lake County gets older, we all know seniors are gonna, the, the senior population's gonna grow in the next ten years. We could find ourselves in that situation. And, you know, I'm not sure that we wanna be in the situation where we need to tell the citizens of Lake County, wanna go on the ballot again. So, um.
Well, Ben.
Sure.
This sounds like a pretty good system. If you'd have done it back when you just, I'm not gonna say arbitrarily, if you have done it back when you started having this problem, designed this system, and start implementing it then, uh, it still doesn't. In my mind, it makes, uh, it's difficult for me to understand why all of a sudden we heard about this from the people that it was affecting as opposed to in a board meeting or in a memo or something that we would have understood what was going on. You should have given this whole, um, whatever you wanna, uh, presentation here, when you made the change and talk about this future syst- hybrid system, because uh, you got a bunch of people angry. Not just, not just the board members, but there are some, uh, writers that, uh, didn't understand what in the world happened. And, uh, that's didn't improve our reputation in the community. So I, I think I'm going back to what I originally said. Why in the world wasn't the board informed quicker about this change and we had to hear about it from the public? For crying out loud, that's what the board is for. And we maybe, maybe have had some input at the time. Maybe we could have helped you, uh, uh, going out into the public and telling people what's going on. But no, you just made the change and, and we got stuck with it, so to speak. That's the thing that angered me most. This, this hybrid system looks like it's pretty good, and I think your software will handle it too.
We didn't make this change out of any other reason but necessity.
I understand that, but you didn't tell anybody.
I told everyone at the November board meeting and in the CEO report that came out fifteen days before that. This was not something that I wanted to do, or, or we could wait. Service quality was too bad. And my job is to do the best I can. And it's not, you know, sometimes I have to react just like everyone does in their business and make a decision that is not what I wanna make. You know, it's, it's not desirable. I don't wanna be here trying to explain this this way.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Uh, so, I'm, he- help me with this. Um, so you're gonna go slightly over capacity?
Yes.
But that overcapacity is reserved for essential or?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So essentially, what you're, what you're saying is there's gonna be sort of two buckets of service. One is essential and one is the non-essential.
It won't necessarily be two buckets. It'll be, it is all the same bucket, but if you're in a certain category, we'll go above and beyond.
Well, I like that. I think that's a great way to go.
Yeah, I, we think, you know, we think this will be a good hybrid model. You know, Lane, part of the reason that I didn't talk about this particular model earlier is we hadn't thought of it yet. We did not plan to do what we had to do. We weren't like, sitting around like, when do we pull the trigger? You know, so we didn't have additional options ready at the time. So it took us some time. We've had a lot of conversations, you know, behind the scenes with me and my operations folks. And it's not an easy thing. And I apologize that you feel like we should have communicated with you faster. But this is also a topic that's hard to put in an email, you know, and, and say what happened.
Um, I, I wanna ask a question. Um, so I agree that this hybrid model looks good and it looks better than the, the previous model. I have a lot of concerns about this hope and a prayer service that we were giving, where we were hoping that we, we were able to accommodate those people. Um, and we might not be able to. So with these people on this, in the, and we'll say the hybrid bucket, um, these unscheduled trips, would we advise them that we might not be able to meet their needs? I mean, I, I just worry that if, if it's, if it's questionable whether we'll be able to help them, that we're just, we're just asking for this problem to happen again, where, where we have unsatisfied customers who aren't getting their, their trips, their on-time trips. Um, I, I, I just, how likely is it that we'll be able to, to meet the demand here, um, for these unscheduled trips? I just, I'm not sure that, I, I like that idea. It just seems, I just, to, from my understanding, it just seems like if we can't provide the service, you know, if, if, if we can't schedule it, when we have this like, maybe we'll be able to get you, um, I, I, at least we need to give them notice of this.
Yeah, so I guess, so, so when a customer interacts with this, they won't be told maybe. They'll be told yes or no. The answer to the customer is always yes or no. Behind the scenes is where this sort of system will take place. So if I'm an essential customer and I call and I'm in the above-capacity number, we won't say, maybe we'll get you a trip. If you're in the first forty between six AM and nine AM, we'll say, yes, you have a trip. But once we pass forty, we'll say, no, you don't have a trip.
But aren't these, these are the trips that are least likely to be on time? I mean, are, is that the case?
No, not necessarily.
And then, okay, sorry to interrupt, but, um, uh, what else was I gonna ask? Um, I forgot. Um, yeah, I can't remember what I was gonna say. Sorry.
So the, the day of service, you'll, the actual, so the day, the day before service is when the trip number is the highest. The day of service, you'll get cancellations and no-shows and stuff, and that makes these numbers, you know, they're above capacity when the scheduling is done, but when the service is delivered, they're much closer to capacity because of the cancellations and no-shows.
So basically what this is, is the gap between the software and reality. So the software is really conservative in the amount of trips that we schedule, but in reality, there's some, there's some slack there. And so this is, this is the slack.
So that's a way, that's certainly a way you can think of it. Our, you know, our scheduling staff reviews all the manifests the drivers do, and they're usually a little better at squeezing things in than the computer is. And so
Right.
That's a good way to think of it. It's, it's that, it's sort of like overbooking an airline. You know some people aren't gonna show up. So you schedule a couple of extra people to be filled. I don't know if they still do that anymore, but I know they used to. So it's the same kind of concept. So, and that's why there are, are, are values at certain times of day. Because we know, you know, those folks that's between six and nine AM, for whatever reason, they cancel a no-show less. Folks from nine to two, eh, a little bit higher chance of not showing up. So that's why we have those numbers broken up, and they're numbers that can be adjusted over time. If we, if we see a certain time slot performing poorly, we could tweak it a little bit if we needed to.
Yeah, and just the last thing I'll say is, is I think most people understand a first come, first serve service. Um, and they know that the sooner they make plans, the more likely it is that they'll be able to carry them out. I think it's harder for people to understand this, you know, essential versus non-essential, kind of maybe we'll be able to squeeze you in, maybe not. Um, that's a little bit hard to understand. And I think, you know, kind of encouraging people to schedule earlier helps, helps us provide better service. Um, and I think it is more understandable to people, not that they necessarily, um, knew about the old way that we, we operated. But, you know, I'm, I'm not totally opposed to the first come, first served idea generally, and I, I do like this, you know, prioritizing these non-essential trips in this way. I think that makes sense, so.
Yeah, most customers really didn't know about essential trips. We didn't communicate that. It's, it wasn't on pamphlets or brochures. They're just, their interaction wasn't, they just got the strip they wanted. And so that's why there was a somewhat negative reaction, because people had not been told no before. Um, but we don't really publish details of all of this stuff, uh, frequently.
Ben, is this sustainable?
Yes, because this is still tied to capacity. So, you know, if for some reason we reduced our, uh, well, reduced or increased our total amount of service we expected to provide, we might tweak these numbers. So let's say i- in hypothetical, where we cut our service in half, we would probably cut these numbers in half. Conversely, if you doubled service, you'd increase the numbers also.
So pardon me for bouncing around, but going back to your training. So I, you, you're rolling drivers out as a group or sort of continuous, uh, and, and obviously that would begin to affect this as you roll more drivers into service, correct?
Right, yes. As more drivers go into service, yes, our capacity will be going up over the next three months, a, a good amount. Um, whether continuous, they're, they're hired in classes, but when they do their one-on-one on-the-road training, they take a difference amount of time. So it feels more like a trickle over time than a big slug of people. But, but they are hired in a big slug of people.
Ben, did you go to our software people and, uh, ask them if they had any solutions that, uh, would help out in a situation like we had, where the service level went down and up and uh, during that period of time? Did, do they have any ideas on what to do or what to tell your people? Did we bring them in? And, uh, and have them maybe sit down and try and help the people, uh, do a better job of scheduling? Uh, there's other things that could have been done, I guess, rather than just change the, uh, the way we're doing business. And are you telling me that the people didn't, didn't know about essential service?
It was not something we published to our riders. The way trips were scheduled and managed is not something we communicate to the public.
To who?
The public. Or really to, to, we don't really, the essential trip system or the first cut, we, I mean, we communicated the first come, first serve system, but we did not frequently communicate the essential trip system. So when we made the change, we told people now it's first come, first served, but we hadn't been telling them, you know, your trip is essential, so it's booked.
As far as bringing trapeze into it, I'm not even sure how much that would help when most of the industry. Does first comes first serve period other than ADI trips. I don't know, I don't even know if they would have had a full understanding of what we were doing in the first place.
Well, so, so the way trapeze, so the way trapeze. Schedules trips is based on a, a, a pretty large system of weights. And so you, as Lake Tran staff. Adjust those weights to prioritize certain things. And so we do sit down with trapeze on about a two to three year basis and review those to make sure they are still accurate. We did not do that because that's a two-day process. We did not do that when this sort of emergency change was made. We do have that on the docket to be done in two thousand twenty-three. So.
So you didn't go to the software people at all?
Not for that particular thing because.
I asked that question. I didn't have an answer. You just, you just answered it. Thank you.
This is a different microphone.
They are taller.
You've alluded to the problem you had and that the, your backs were essentially against the wall. But what hasn't really come out in any specifics here is the safety factor. The drivers, many of them were new. And. I don't know about him, but what I saw is drivers pushing wheelchairs too fast, not paying attention to bumper holes in the sidewalk. And just trying to do the whole process of onboarding and onboarding passengers. In a way that I found myself frequently saying, slow down. And I was really getting concerned that in their haste to try to get to all these rides, many of them were saying, I'm running behind. But there was going to be an accident, a serious accident. That was my concern based on what I was seeing, just watching what was going on in addition to being late.
Yeah. It was, it was not a good situation, you know, it was not. And we had to react to, to deal with it. And I, again, you know, I'm sorry, we didn't communicate it as quickly as we could have to the board, but. It was not something that we had a time or, or option to have a lot of conversations about. So kind of to, to, to wrap up a little bit. Sorry.
These, these are numbers that you're assuming on the peak days. Of, of, of service. So, I mean, we show the curve kind of going up and down, up and down, but on the real low days, are there days when? You would have excess rides rather than having the forty unscheduled trips?
When you say excess rides, what do you mean? Um, it's possible. We modify. The, the driver schedules with the part-time folks, especially to try and match the, the weekday curve of, of trips. So Wednesday is always our busiest day. So we have sixty-plus part-timers working on, on Wednesday, but on a Tuesday, we have forty. So the capacity we provide, we try to match with historical trends in usage. So if for some reason, like a lot of times you have this the day before a holiday, ridership will be real low. It's possible you have some excess. But we have a provision in the union agreement about how many people we allow on vacation. And so if there's a situation where we see. An excess in the future, we open that to more people and more people will take days off.
Okay, so taking that comment into, to account, then your anticipation would be that you would have unscheduled trips every day?
Yes. And it may not hit this cap.
Right.
But yes, I, we expect there to be unscheduled trips every day.
Okay.
So. You've seen the hybrid system. That's what we plan to sort of implement. My, my, my target is going to be April. I'm going to wa, we're going to watch ridership and we'll keep the board informed as to when we see kind of the trigger time about that happening. But there's some other things we need to be sort of thinking about in the future. So what does twenty twenty-three hold for us? There's, there's sort of three things. We're making a lot of strides in hiring. We have done a good job getting people in the door and getting them trained. Seventy-five people in, you know, seven months is. Or in eight months is, is great. We don't know what demand is going to look like in twenty-three. We're going to be bouncing probably up and down between the past. We may, and I'm not ready to say this as a thing that I'm recommending, we may need to think about additional drivers on the org chart if ridership continues to go up. That's something we'll have more detailed conversations with as we see ridership change. The bigger issue is that we are going to see, there's going to be a bus shortage. We are gonna run out of available, available vehicles based on all the people we've been hiring, and if we have to hire anymore. Also mostly because we are seeing some crazy lead times on replacement parts. We have buses that have been out of service for six months waiting on a part. And I'm getting very nervous, you know, at first, we weren't impacted that bad. We were keeping up with things, but. You know, we've had, we've been waiting on an engine, one of the. One of the two thousand seventeen buses had an engine failure eight months ago. We still don't have a replacement engine and they can't even tell us when we should expect to see it. And it's all buses. We've had some electrical, uh, electric buses with parts that we haven't been able to get. We've had some diesel buses. We've had some dialeride buses. I'm really nervous about the parts. Status of the world and I, I'm looking at Gary because I'm hoping he might have good news for me for the future. But I think, you know, we, we, we put our. Oh, I keep forgetting the name of the plan. The plan that allows us to run minivans. We put that plan in place. We haven't bought any minivans yet. The lead time on those is much lower. So as we watch ridership, you know, there is a possibility that we're going to need to plan some expansion buses. Here in the future, or some short-term buses, just to keep enough vehicles on the road. We had to put regular dialeride buses on fixed drought service last week because we didn't have enough fixed drought buses to be able to do it. And so it, it's getting, I'm getting nervous. Hasn't happened. It's not, you know, the end of the world yet, but I'm getting nervous. Keith's making me nervous because he talks about it a lot. So something we're gonna have to be watching.
So buses roll off service, out of service, you know, at some point in time.
Yeah.
Can we milk some of them a little bit longer and, and not roll them out as quickly? Or is that a mandated kind of thing?
Yes and no. There are some buses that we can't, like the buses that the Ohio EPA grant funded new buses for, we have to destroy those. Some of the other ones, though, we can keep longer and milk a little longer, and we've had that conversation. We are definitely going to keep some and plan to keep them in longer, in service longer.
My guess is that the EPA mandate might be soft at this point because I'm sure they're hearing from lots of people about supply chain issues.
We asked, they didn't change their opinion.
Stomp your feet.
Huh?
Stomp your feet.
We'll ask again. They have, they're pretty strict about, you have to punch a hole, you have to provide documentation, you got to show pictures of the thing cut in half. It's, it's a little silly actually, but. We have, in, in dialeride buses, we have five of those that are in that category, I think, sitting behind the building, but we have some others. So. Have we hit it yet where we need to be really worried? No. But is it out there? Yes. And the reason I bring it up is because the lead times are really long, so we have to sort of do our best to predict it. Well in advance. A regular dialeride bus, the lead time is eighteen months. And so that's a long time. A, a minivan is not as bad. Minivan I probably could get in a couple of months. But if we're talking about extra dialeride buses, we have to. Do that the long time in advance. So not quite ready. I, I, you know, that's something I think we're probably talking about in April or May. But it is something that we're going to have to be sort of cognizant of. I mean, we've had, we've had one bus at the body shop since January of last year, waiting for some fiberglass parts that just. We finally told the body shop, like, can you fix it? And they're like, well. Yes, but not really. So it's, it's, it's a little rough, but you know, that's, that's kind of what happened. I look forward to a better future in twenty-three. But the last quarter of, of twenty-two was rough, is real rough.
This has been helpful for me. I appreciate the time. It, it's pretty complicated.
Yeah. Unfortunately, dialeride is, is a world of four hundred variables and there's, we're balancing plates all the time.
Um, I think we should communicate something to customers, just that says that, you know, we, we strive to meet every, you know. The, the demand for essential trips and we, we, we will do everything we can to, to meet the demand for that, but there may be a time where. Where it's above capacity and we have to say no. I think people need to know that, that we might say no, especially since we never said no in the past to that, to those requests. So I think it might be, be wise to advise the public that there may be a time and we do say no, and it would incentivize people to. Get their requests in earlier, and I think that would help with scheduling and help the customers too, because they're not assuming that we'll say yes when, when we can't.
Yeah, we, we've been doing, we've been doing that, but on a one-on-one basis when they call, but we haven't put out any sort of mass communication with like Facebook or anything, but that's something we can certainly do. So that's, that's also, you know, the high level. I know that took an hour, but that's the high level summary. I could get into lots more details about dialeride metrics if anybody really wants to. You know, this is kind of just scratching the surface of all the stuff that goes into making it all work behind the scenes.
Thank you, Ben. Continuing with the last slide here, if anyone has any discussions or questions, now would be the proper time to bring those up.
I just want to say that I thought that that was a very informative presentation. Even though I'm a regular user of dialeride, I learned quite a bit. So I mean, I, I, I think that I, I feel much. Like I have a much greater understanding of why the decision, the decision was made and the potentials, you know, moving forward. I still, you know, I, I wish it could be, you know. Other, another way, but I do. I do see why the, the decision had to be made and a, a lot clearer than I did before. So. For that, I thank you for the time to putting, for putting it all that together.
Uh, the answer to your supply chain. Quiz, it, it is improving, but it's spotty.
Okay.
So I don't think you can count on significant change.
I just read the other day that the banks and various credit card companies, they have a shortage of the plastic. Be able to replace cards.
Any other questions or comments?
I have, I have just one.
Sure, Chuck.
Ben. Just kind of curious, how clear is your crystal ball as to? If, if we had the choice between staying on this hybrid system or the new future system and that versus going back to the way we were is, are we? Thinking that this newer system is going to be what you're going to follow for the next eight, nine years? Or? And then I know that there's things in there that you have to keep evaluating in that, but. We have a pandemic again, you know, yeah, and the ridership goes as low as it does, would we? Think about reverting back to something else or, or would you continue on this? And I, and I know it's hypothetical.
Yeah, you know, we're going to continue to monitor all the different things we monitor. You know, some of the most informative information will be denials and what those look like in the future. If we see denials. And that's what I talk about possibly extra drivers on an org chart. You know, if I see denials at four, five hundred, six hundred a month, that means there are still trips beyond the essential trips that aren't being met. It, it's hard to say, you know, the, the, the senior population's going up in Lake County, so we're, we're probably going to have more demand. You know, I, I know some of you that were around in two thousand eighteen for the, again, the strategic planning retreat. We talked about the need to, to put a capacity limit in place then, you know, because. Not having a capacity limit is, is sort of my responsible, in my opinion, is irresponsible because it's, it's, it's committing to the world. I didn't want to do it this way, certainly. Our original plan was to, to increase service so that everyone was getting what they needed. And then put a cap. So as service demand increased over time, people hit the cap gently. I think that the hybrid system is probably the right way to go for the foreseeable future. Because we still have, there still is a hard limit somewhere. Now, we can sit around and increase that limit if we want to. If we say, hey, look, you know, we want to put, we want that number to be higher. But there needs to be a limit, in my opinion, you know, because if not. The, the risk is always going back and asking for more. And, you know, no matter how much service I want to provide and how much I love what we do for the community. There is a responsible place to stop, you know, because we can't be everything to everybody. We need to. Meet the needs of the core mission of folks, but we shouldn't be everybody's transportation in Lake County. So I think having a limit is the, the, the responsible thing to do. I think we're going to monitor it though and make sure this is the, the way to do it. And until we put it in practice for a while and see the effects. I don't know if I can give you a specific answer.
I didn't think you would. I appreciate your, your ins.
I appreciate your insights as to what your thought process is going forward. And I real, and I realize that it's pretty muddy.
Yeah.
Type of look ahead.
Yeah, question, Ben.
Sure.
You know, you've been here for, you know, a few years now. How do you determine or hit, or do you guys have any kind of formula that, that determines what that cap should be? Based on, you know, budget, cash flow, ridership, all, all of those, you know, all the variables.
Yeah, so we, when we increased service as a result of the levy, we did a lot of projections and where, where we thought service should be. Or shouldn't be based on, you know, the average number of trips a driver can do and a bunch of different metrics. Then the pandemic, you know, kind of exploded us and we never got to really. Test that. So typically in our industry, the cap is a financial cap. It's, we say, how much money do we want to spend on X? And we sort of stay there. So in our case, you know, that's the same thing. When, when we put the budget together and the board approves an org chart, that's the service cap, if you will. For things like fixed droughts, it's more definitive because you can say, yeah, I want this fixed drought here and I want to provide service every hour and I, I can have a pretty clear metric. But for dialeride, it's really how many, how many hours of service do I want to provide as an aggregate is typically the, the point you say, how much do I want to provide?
That's based on, based on the budget.
Typically, yes, the, the budget is really the limiting factor.
Traditionally.
Question. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, um, can we, moving forward, can we as a board? Receive more of the, you know, can we, as you continue to monitor the situation, can we continue to receive more information later in our meetings or some other? Format regarding how things are going so that we can be a part of watching and see, and you know, and, and so that we can kind of all see together when that trigger point is coming. As opposed to it being more unilateral on your end?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my, my intention is to provide updates about this on a monthly basis as we go. You know, and say, hey, here's where we're seeing things, you know, is this ridership trend that we have seen in the past materializing? So, so yes, the short answer is yes, absolutely.
Then I have a question. Before all of this hit, we had talked about having service later in the evenings. How has what's happened here impacted your ability to do that expansion by a couple hours on the weeknights?
Yeah, so that's been in, that's another thing that's been in our minds. It's been in my CEO report a couple of times, I think. We, we are waiting to do that until dialeride is where we want it to be. So my intention at this point is to really ape, to me, March is going to be the, the real. Sort of high watermark, if you will. That's when ridership spikes again traditionally. So when we see what happens in March. If we feel comfortable that we've met that demand well, denials are not high, service quality is good. That means we have the right people in place and then we would think about implementing those expanded hours. We have a union pick in May, which is an excellent time to make big changes to the schedule. So if we hit all our targets and our, and March looks good, I would think we would roll that out. Maybe towards the end of May or beginning of June, but we need, I don't want to go committing more service on the road if we can't meet our existing demands.
So I don't know enough to be able to make this a particularly intelligent comment, but I'll go ahead anyway. This strikes me as a little bit like the airline model. They have sort of a similar situation where, you know, I mean, they don't, they don't move planes around, but they have crews that are on standby. And I wonder if we couldn't. Think about some sort of a standby. I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to be able to get a rough idea of how much. Shortfall you have in terms of crew or drivers, but I don't think it would be horribly expensive for us to. I don't think it would be horribly expensive for us to think in terms of having some sort of a standby crew. Um, maybe you're doing that already.
And you're talking about drivers?
Drivers.
Yeah, so in in our industry, that's called the extra board, um, and we do have that. Now. I think we probably could stand to expand it a little. But we do have an extra board, which is a certain number of employees that don't have an assigned job when they come into work that day. They have an assigned set of hours, but when they walk in the door, dispatch will tell them, you're driving this today, you're driving this day, you're driving this today. So. We do do that, uh, to extent. We also have a thing called, um, we have drivers called vacancy fill, which is a a another extension of that where they they plan that further out. So um, we do do that. One of the things that. I've been talking to our oper- operations folks about for a long time is, and this is more dialer ride details that. Are, you know, deep into the belly of the beast, but. When a driver, traditionally, when a bus driver, a dialer ride bus driver calls off. They do what they call dump the log, and they they dump the log, they put all the trips back out and call it general population and try to find homes for them. I've been pushing our people to switch to a, you don't dump the log, you spend time making that as efficient as possible. You put another human in there and to drive that route instead of dumping it and causing chaos. And so that is a a a system we are working on implementing. Um, there's a kind of balancing of resources we have to do to make that work effectively. But that that leans harder onto the model you just talked about versus what we've done in the past, which in my opinion leads to a greater efficiency. In the delivery of service because you can fine tune that manifest. Ahead of time and make sure it is as efficient as you possibly can make it, and then you don't mess with it. And so I think that's a, a a thing we can do to kind of tweak our efficiency. Um. As far as passengers per hour go and and passengers per mile, which are the industry metrics for measuring your dialer ride effectiveness, we are above our peers. Um, so we we are more efficient than like R T A and some other folks, and I can provide some some examples and breakdowns of that if you, if you guys would like to see them, but. Uh, that doesn't mean there isn't room for improvement, and there, I think there is some.
Years ago, they used something they called a floater.
Still have them.
You still have them, but even that was not effective in this situation.
Yeah, so we use floaters. So a floater is a part-time driver who has a schedule and has a run, but doesn't necessarily have trips. So it's kind of like an extra board person, so we have like a three-pronged approach. We have the extra board, we have vacancy fill, and we have floaters. Um, what what I just talked about, about switching to a, replace the person versus the trips model eliminates the floaters and puts. Uh, moves those people to a different role, so um. That's probably one of the tools we're gonna use to make an adjustment with, but they do still exist.
Any other questions or comments for Ben?
If anyone wants to go into more detail about this, I'm happy to to talk more offline. You know, this is, this is. I've been, I've been doing this twenty-two years, so this is my kind of area, speciality, so I'd be happy to go over any of it with you.
No, thank you for doing the presentation and the slides. I think it was very helpful and informative. Um, it really. Put a different light on it. Uh, at this time, is there a motion to adjourn today's Board of Trustees special meeting? Motion made by Ms. McNamee, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zibble. Trudy, could you please call the roll?
Epic?
Yes.
Back to me? He's mo-?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned at five sixteen today.